Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order, the November tenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Reverend Candace Frazier, rector of the Church of the Ascension located here in Montgomery, will now offer her invocation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Lord is with us. Let us pray. Almighty God, the one that we know as Creator, Redeemer, and Sustainer, look favorably upon your people, that we may know you and desire to do your work, partnering with you and one another to bring about reconciliation in this world. Bless our educators, teachers, librarians, aides, cafeteria workers, janitors, administrators, and all those who work to form your children. Give to them a heart filled with peace and compassion, that they might shine your light into the dark places of this world, the dark places of our hearts. Bless our children, teens, and all those who have been given under our care and responsibility, that they would know your love, be nurtured in your hope, and inspired in wisdom and joy, not simply to grow into our future, but to be a part of our present. Help us to value one another, those who are the least among us and those who have privilege, that we might find our differences lessened, and our spirit of commonality and community offering us purpose and direction. And finally, Lord, I would ask your blessing upon those who gather here this day, that they might be guided by a spirit of wisdom and discernment, to know your will and to walk in your ways, the ways of love, of justice, and of truth. We ask all these things in your mercy. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Frazier. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thorington, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivey?
Present.
Mrs. Dr. McCarty? Mrs. McRae? Dr. Renters?
Here.
Dr. Richardson?
Present.
Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Here.
Governor, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Thorington. We'll now consider a motion to approve the agenda for the November tenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Ms. Thorington, is anyone signed up to speak today?
No, ma'am. There are no public speakers.
All right. We'll move to item G, action items, unfinished business. Is any unfinished business, Ms. Thorington?
There's no unfinished business.
Thank you. Under new business, we will now consider a resolution in recognition of Alberta Elementary School and the Baldwin County School System located in State School Board District One as a twenty twenty-two blue ribbon school. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Newton Elementary School in Dale County, located in the State School Board District Two, as a twenty twenty-two blue ribbon school. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I proudly make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Piedmont Elementary School and the Piedmont City School System located in the State School Board District Six as a twenty twenty-two blue ribbon school.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, please.
Dr. McCarty would love to be here to make the motion herself, and I know you know where she is.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution in recognition of Moody Elementary School and the St. Clair County School System, also located in the State School Board District Six, as a twenty twenty-two blue ribbon school. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Governor, just to point out personal privilege, Dr. McCarty would also love to be here to make the motion today.
All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now we'll consider a resolution in recognition of Walter Jackson Elementary School and the Decatur City School System located in the State School Board District Seven as a twenty twenty-two blue ribbon school. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I made that motion because Ms. McRae has a family problem, and that's her district, and she can't be here, but I make the motion on her behalf.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution honoring Alabama twenty twenty-two college-ready middle and junior high schools of excellence. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution honoring Alabama twenty twenty-two college-ready high schools of excellence. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of December five through nine, twenty twenty-two, as Special Education Inclusive Schools Week in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider Alabama State Board of Education Resolution declaring the critical importance of teacher and student attendance. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a resolution to appoint the Science State Course of Study Committee. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We'll now consider a resolution to appoint the Career and Technical Education State Course of Study Committee. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Item L, we will now consider the adoption of amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule two nine zero dash three dash one dash point zero two pertaining to regulations governing public schools. Y'all, I hope you'll join me in voting to close the gap between our graduation rate and our college and career readiness rate. As I've said before, this step is not about adding more requirements, it's about measuring what matters. This vote will focus our attention and energy on making sure resources are where they need to be. Parents want their children to graduate high school with the skills needed to excel in college and career. And since the rule does not take effect until twenty twenty-eight, we have plenty of time to work with local school districts to expand access to a variety of college and career readiness indicators to meet the interests of every student. There's nothing more important than we can do than to graduate our students ready for the next step. The adoption of this rule signals our commitment to this most important sacred duty. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand.
Governor, I have a statement.
All those opposed, by like sign.
Well, let's do it again. We need to get this to do.
I thought she was talking. I thought someone was speaking. I'm sorry.
Can we vote again, Governor?
All right. All those in favor of this motion to adopt this resolution to close the gap, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Vote carries, Governor.
Say, give Ms. Thorington.
Vote carries.
Okay, thank you. Item L, we'll now select Alabama State Board of Education delegate for the Alabama Association of School Boards twenty twenty-two convention and delegate assembly. Nominations are now in order.
Doctor, I would like to nominate Dr. Yvette Richardson, who just recently re-elected Tuesday for another, for her third term, I believe.
Fourth term.
Fourth term, sorry.
Thanks to the people now. Thanks to the people.
And thanks to your high performance. It's a pleasure for me to serve with her and to nominate her to represent us to the Alabama Association of School Board.
Second.
Are there any more nominations? Fourth. All right, we have one board member that's been nominated. Do I hear a motion to confirm the selection of Dr. Yvette Richardson as a delegate?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share today?
There is none today, Governor.
Thank you. Would you give us a report?
Yes, ma'am. I thank you for the time, Governor. It's good to make a report today. We have a lot of visitors in the room, and many of them are going to stay with us afterward. We want to do a lot of pictures. It will be a bit chaotic, but if you'll just hang out for a few minutes, we'll make sure we get all of those. I want to recognize, I have two things that I do want to bring to the board in my report this morning, but before I do that, I do want to just recognize some of those who've been called out today and voted on. We have your resolutions, and we'll do all that after the meeting. But just quickly, I know from Baldwin County Schools, if those folks would stand representing Alberta Elementary, I think we have Superintendent Eddie Tyler, the principal Jenny Brazil, and teachers Joy Kenny and Stacy Lipscomb here. Congratulations on your blue ribbon again. Stay with us afterward, and we're going to do some photos with your board members. From Dale County Schools, from Newton Elementary School, I know we have Superintendent Ben Baker, Assistant Superintendent Chuck Walker, Principal Patrick Reed, who I think was the principal when this was submitted, but maybe has moved on now, and also Shannon Deloney, a school board member. If they'd please stand. From the Decatur City Schools, Walter Jackson Elementary School, one of our blue ribbon schools, Superintendent Dr. Michael Douglas, Principal Tamara Cottle, and teachers Lee Payne and Kirsten Hawkins are with us, I think. And our final blue ribbon school, oh, sorry, I have two more. Moody Elementary School Superintendent Justin Burns, who was also just elected to that position. He took over because previous superintendent resigned after, I guess, this summer, but Mr. Burns just elected to his first term this week. Lance Cisco, the principal, and teachers Tracy Garcia and Jason Tugel are with us. And not least of all, but I should not forget our board member, St. Clair County Board Member Marie Manning, who was, of course, just elected to the state board on this week too. So glad that you're with them. And our last group is from the Piedmont City Schools, Superintendent Mike Hayes, Principal Bridget Stewart, and teachers Mandy Barber, Lori Dearman, Candy Mobley, and Deanna Knight, if they would stand. I want to, Ms. Stewart has to stay standing for just a minute, so I want everybody, make her just pull her out. I hired Ms. Stewart as a teacher years ago. She's super, but I do want to make note, there are about ninety blue ribbon schools nationwide, and we're thrilled to have five here in Alabama, but every year they choose only a very, very, very few what they call Terrill-Bale principals. So of the blue ribbon schools, there are certain principals, I think six across the nation, who are recognized as outstanding principals. To my knowledge, Alabama has never had one before this year, and Ms. Stewart won the Terrill-Bale Award this year. And I will not be calling out all the superintendents and others, but I do want to recognize the schools that are here for A-plus college-ready. These are schools who have gone above and beyond and met certain special goals this year, and outlines those in their resolutions. But we have representatives from the high schools. If all of these, if you represent one of these high schools, superintendents, principals, teachers, please stand. In Baldwin County, Alberta High School; in DeKalb County, Crossville High School; in Dothan City, Dothan High School; in Geneva City, Geneva High School; and in Troy City, Charles Henderson High School. If all of you would please stand. Lots of good news to share today, and just a little more in our middle schools, from Elmore County, Watumpka Middle School; from Jackson County, Pidska School; from Orange Beach City, we have Orange Beach Middle School; from Scottsboro City, Scottsboro Junior High School; from Trustful City, Hewitt Trustful Middle School; from Tuscaloosa County, Brookwood Middle School; and from Walker County, Carbon Hill Junior High School. Thank you all, and please again, stay with us afterward. We have two quick things. These will be very quick, but we do want to recognize two things. One, Veterans Day is tomorrow. Dr. Blake Busman is going to come down. We have done a lot with Veterans Day. If you'll come to the podium, Dr. Busman, to talk, this year he has really taken the theme around Veterans Day and done so much for our schools, so I've asked him to do just a little program here, and then after that, we'll have a quick update on our NAEP results, and then after that, I will conclude my report. Dr. Busman.
Good morning. As we sit on the eve of the seventy-fifth anniversary of Veterans Day, commemoration began here in Alabama. We reflect on the theme of service. I had the pleasure yesterday of listening to an American hero, Major General James Livingston of the U.S. Marine Corps, a Medal of Honor recipient and member of the Auburn family. As he spoke at a luncheon, I reflected on his book, Noble Warrior, and a quote he included in it. He wrote, "There is no greater honor than the opportunity to serve and help preserve our freedom. It's the essence of humanity." This quote exemplifies our veterans. They serve one another through accountability and friendship. They serve their nation through patriotism and defense, and they serve our world in seeking peace and democracy for all. As the scriptures remind us, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God. At the Alabama State Department of Education, we are fortunate to have nineteen members of our staff family who have lived this commitment to service throughout their adult life. They served our nation in the military, and they now serve the students, teachers, and communities of Alabama. I would like to take this time to recognize these exemplars of service. When I call your name, please stand up. For our audience, if you will, please hold your applause until all have been recognized. Jeffrey Beams, Air Force, thirteen years. Steve Blair, Air Force, thirteen years. Joseph Clark, Army, three years. Robert Davis, Army and Navy, twenty-one years. Josh Fields, Army, four years. Andy Hardwick, Army, sixteen years. Archie Maggard, Air Force, twenty years. Patrick Mantell, Air Force, twenty-five years. Dom Martell, Air Force, ten and a half years. Chad Musser, Air Force, nine years. Teresa Patterson, Army, ten years. Rebecca Pines, Air Force, twenty-four and a half years. David Pope, Air Force, twenty-one years. Larry Richardson, Navy, eleven years. Lynette Smith, Air Force, three years. Charles Stringham, Air Force, four years. Cheryl Tucker, Navy, eleven years. Calvin Vance, Army, thirty-three years. Gary Watson, Army, eight years. Thank you to each of you who guide us every day by your model of service. Please give them a round of applause. During this week and next, our schools are celebrating veterans in their communities and families. This year, the Alabama State Department of Education became a commemorative partner of the United States of America Vietnam War Commemoration, a Department of Defense initiative in recognition of the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War. We have sought to support our schools, hosting Veteran Day events through providing them commemorative materials. Over one hundred schools signed up to participate in observance of this commemoration, as they have developed programming around the Vietnam War, in addition to their traditional presentations. An estimated twenty-seven hundred Vietnam veterans are being recognized at these Veteran Day events. At each of these ceremonies, they will be presented with the official Vietnam Veterans Commemoration lapel pin. These ceremonies are being attended by over forty thousand students, faculty, and family members. It is truly a statewide effort, as schools from Gulf Shores to Bridgeport, Livingston to Lynette are participating. We would be remiss, though, to not take dedicated time this morning to recognizing another one of our models of service in our presence. Dr. Wayne Reynolds exemplifies this trait of lifelong service. From August nineteen sixty-six to March nineteen sixty-nine, Dr. Reynolds served in the U.S. Army. He became a medic with the Ninety-Fifth Evacuation Hospital in Da Nang in January nineteen sixty-eight during the height and commencement of the Tet Offensive. He was then sent north to Phu Bai, serving with the Twenty-Second Surgical Hospital. His time in Vietnam was dedicated to serving and saving the lives of his fellow soldiers. In nineteen sixty-nine, he returned home and began his transition to being a servant leader in education that we know of today. Yet his service to his fellow veterans did not end when he took off his uniform. Dr. Reynolds has served as president of the State Council of the Vietnam Veterans of America, as well as treasurer for the National Vietnam Veterans of America Organization. The VVA has led the way in lifting up our veterans, blazing a path forward in improvements for how our veterans are treated today. It is our Vietnam veterans, many of whom did not receive the gratitude they deserved when they returned home, who still today give of themselves selflessly to serve our nation. Today, we in Alabama, in our schools across the state, are seeking to make amends for these past omissions, as we say, "Thank you and welcome home." I would like to invite Dr. Reynolds to come and accept an official commemoration lapel pin this morning in recognition of his Vietnam service and lifelong dedication to his fellow veterans. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
I'm not often at a loss for words, but I am, and I do accept this on behalf of all who served. I know there are many in this audience who serve on local boards and other activities, and the strength of this country is the volunteer service, both in the, for all of you who serve in public education, and all of us who have served in the military. It's a call that we all answer on a daily basis, and our country's future depends on our commitment and our willingness and our selfless service. And no, though I'm not a Marine, today is the Marine Corps birthday, so for you who are Marines, which General Livingston I sat next to was, would remind you, thank you, and thank you for your recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for your service, and as he makes his way back up, the last part of our report today, Maggie Hicks will come. We're going to do this just quickly, as y'all know, since our last board meeting, the NAEP results have been out. Maggie has just a few slides. We will, this will be the end of my report, and then after that, if there are questions from board members, we'll be glad to answer those later this afternoon, the work session, or of course, anytime. We'll say, we certainly appreciate Dr. Reynolds' service. I won't make it any longer, but I know that is a great picture, and I hope he still has those sunglasses. I've told him that, but I know- I've told him that, but, but I know in a recent conversation, Dr. Reynolds told me that, just in passing, he, he was a medic, as you know, and he said, "Dr. Mackey, I saw more blood as a twenty-year-old than any man should see in his life, and we appreciate your service." Ms. Hicks.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Governor, board members, and Dr. Mackey, I thank you this morning for the opportunity to come and give you our official NAEP results. As you know, NAEP released those results at the end, some, a while back, a few months, a few weeks ago, and it was an honor to sit there amongst the other states to see what, how Alabama actually measured against other states. Dr. Sibley and I were there in the room when other states were talking about how, how they had declined, and it was an honor for us to say, we didn't decline, we held our own. I first want to echo a conversation, or messages that have already been presented for this entire few weeks about teachers, because it's, it's the teachers that have made this possible, because they're in the, in the classrooms each day with those students, helping them to make sure that they're successful, not only in that classroom, but when they, they leave that classroom, go on to the next grade, but eventually leave their schools to be successful in, in the world of whatever they choose to do. Again, as you know, we have selected our stratified random sample students, schools that are chosen each year. We had roughly, in twenty-two, one hundred and eighty-six schools that participated, which came from seventy-nine school districts. A hundred, we had, did have a hundred percent school participation. No one opted out. And of course, it gives you the number there of how many students this entailed in reading and math. And of course, we know that the, the Nation's Report Card reports out on reading and math. And of course, we look at the achievement levels as we do with any of our assessments, and we see that NAEP has the basic, proficient and advanced. Are we exactly where we need to be in our state? No, we're not. We know that we've got work to do, but we're here, as all educators are, to make sure that we get that work ready for those students and make sure, again, that they're successful. It's just not about the work, it's about how can we make sure that they're successful when they leave the K-12 education. As you noted in some of the news articles that have gone out, we did hold our own, but if we notice that in the reading grade four, we went from, from number forty-nine amongst the states to number thirty-nine. That was a big jump for our fourth grade reading. There's a lot of conversations out about why did this take place? We know that it's, again, the efforts of the educators that are in working with those students every day. For math in grade four, we went from number fifty-two, and folks say, how can you be fifty-two? Well, they have the Department of Defense, Defense and also others there, but we went from number fifty-two to number forty amongst the states, and that's grade four math. For NAEP reading, grade eight, overall, we went from forty-nine to number forty-nine. Some folks may look at this as, okay, we had no improvement. Well, true, we may not have jumped up a, a number, but we did see that we held our own in eighth grade math. And, I'm sorry, reading. And then math, grade eight, we went from fifty-two to number forty-seven. Again, we see improvements, and we may not overall see a jump in the scale scores when we look at those, but we do see improvements in our state with the work that's going on, again, with all the educators, with your guidance and the initiatives that have been put in place over the last few years and as we continue to move forward with those. We see that our students are going to be very successful. And again, we, we can't thank those teachers enough for the hard work that they put in in working with all of those students.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Governor, as I conclude my report, there's one group I did not ask to stand, and I would like to, and that's, we, we met local, the state board last night, all these members up here met with local school board members from around the state. Alabama Association of School Boards is doing its Local School Board Advocacy Day, so we have a lot of local board members here, and I would like to recognize them. If all the local school board members who are here with us would stand this morning, let us recognize you. Thank you for your service. As I often say, I know that most of you went into it only to get the money, but, yeah, that is a joke, an inside joke that we all know well. It's, it is great service, and we appreciate your service to local schools across the state. Governor, that concludes my report. I would remind everybody to stay, and we'll do some pictures after the meeting.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Mackey. The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State School Board of Education will be held on Thursday, December eight, at twenty twenty-two, at ten a.m. in the Gordon Persson's Building Auditorium, and the work session will be immediately following the board meeting in Room P-103 in the Gordon Persson's Building. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, stand up. All those opposed, stand up.
All of our blue ribbon schools, we'll start with you. If y'all would make your way down, and we want to get a board, a picture with your board member, please.